Jacob didn't stick around?
Unless he's coming back.
Coming back, okay.
I bet he comes back.
Okay.
Jacob, our reporter from the Star of Publications.
Oh, yeah.
He was here at eight and he took pictures, individual pictures of the oath and.
Oh, he did?
Yes.
He might watch it online.
The reporter put that in the paper and.
Yeah. I like him. He's really good.
I do.
He's very accurate.
Yeah. Yeah, I do too.
Well, at least I think so.
He calls Monty and makes sure he gets things right.
Yeah, I like that.
In my reporting, so.
I was so used to having to write articles about him.
Oh, so he writes them.
Really good.
Yeah.
He's really good. I like him a lot.
We had Natasha before that.
Yeah.
She's kind of, I think.
She's still there.
Yeah. Yep, maybe like his boss or.
Yeah, I think so.
But she's really good too.
Yeah, she is.
It's amazing what you can read from a person's facial expressions from their eyes.
Okay, Steve, I did exactly like you told me to do. Stream, go to.
All right, I'm gonna go check. See if it's streaming.
Okay.
Are we expecting anyone on the go-to meeting call today?
You know, not maybe, Chris, but I'm not sure, you know. I feel they need to kind of keep it available as an option for people, just in case.
I was just curious so we could test.
Yeah, you know. So, we'll see how it goes, yeah.
Sounds good. I'll go check it.
Yep.
Just a minute. As we, since we live here, we just want to make sure, you know, when we get these started, that your green light is on on your mic. It's just, and sometimes it's shut off, but then we wouldn't be able to hear you on the screen. I have all the DAS mics muted right now. But anyway, we're, we have a new audio system. We're still kind of working a few kinks out. At some point, I've got a mute all button, but I've got them muted right now, so. I know we've got a few instances where they haven't been on, and then we wouldn't be able to hear that person talking on the livestream, so.
Yeah, it does, you know, that was, that's the challenge of capturing the person at the.
At the very end, so we can't see Ed.
Right, yeah.
Now, is there any chance that we can have our, or our annual meeting without going virtual, or is that?
It's gonna be tough.
Without?
It'll be tough, yeah. Yeah, I'm, I don't know. Maybe the, maybe the next membership meeting will do it.
How's that now, Vicki?
That's better.
The appointed hour has arrived.
Everybody ready?
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay. All right, let's call the mean or and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge. Vicki, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Pop?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Schlangen?
Here.
Commissioner Gopinski?
Here.
Commissioner Heinon?
Here.
All righty, thank you. Well, it's my job then to take nominations for chair, and then I'll just turn it right over to the new chair. So, are there nominations for Chair of the County Board? Are there nominations?
Nominate Ed Paul.
Commissioner Pop has been nominated for Chair of the County Board. Are there any other nominations?
I'll second it.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Johnson. All those in favor of that nomination, please vote, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Pop, you are a chair, and the meeting is all yours now. Take it from here.
So, we'll, we'll, I'll switch with you, but.
You want to switch places?
Yeah, I want to skip places.
It makes it easier to see everybody if you're in the center.
Make sure you grab your glasses.
Um. Approve or amend the agenda? Mr. Chair, we don't actually have any amendments. We just have some additional documents that go with existing agenda items. So again, nothing to amend or, or nothing to change.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the amendments presented.
Second.
Most of them made and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Open forum, is there anybody signed up in the back? Nope, nobody's signed up. We'll set the 2021 County Board meeting and dates.
So, Mr. Chair, again, you see, you see in your packet, we follow the traditional pattern of first and third Tuesdays, but we left December open for some discussion today. You may have noted in your packet, I included a December 2021 calendar. It does look like that potentially we would need to move our first meeting anyway because the AMC conference. I think one of the problems is, you know, the AMC conference is still so much up in the air of, of how long, if it actually occur, or, or how long it would be. Potentially, it could, it could start Sunday, the 5th, and run through probably the afternoon of the 7th. That would be a typical schedule. So, you know, you might want to, you might want to go ahead and set your meetings anticipating that it will occur. So, you could, for example, have your first meeting December, you know, the 8th and later then, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One thing we got to consider, though, is that the truth and taxation.
Right.
Too. And eventually at, at 7 o'clock.
Right.
You know.
And that was another consideration. We certainly invited Nadine to be here, part of that discussion. So, I guess that's perhaps the consensus is, do you want to have a separate TNT meeting, just that one night, or combine it with a regular board meeting? You know, that practice was started maybe 10 years ago of combining TNT with a regular board meeting. You don't have to, of course. The TNT meeting just has to happen 6:00 PM and later, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Monty, I assume if we set the meetings today, we can revise that?
You can always revise them, you bet, yep.
One, one thing I do know is that I've been online with the AMC state board meetings, and they're anticipating that they are going to be in person, starting with their conference in September.
Okay.
What they're doing right now.
Well, that would be great news, yeah.
And their annual conference will not end until noon on the 8th, as of now.
Oh, noon on the 8th, okay.
They did it the last, the last go-around here, you know, not, not the last one, but 2019 when we had it.
Okay.
For, yeah, they, they extended that out an extra half a day.
That's much more traditional then, because it, it used to go three and a, two and a half days, right?
And they had a lot of pushback from some people that didn't like it, and some people that did, but they agreed to, to go with that again this year, so.
So then you might not, you might want to schedule the, sometime after the 9th or later.
I agree with Commissioner Johnson that we can. Mr. Chair, is it appropriate to move it to the 14th and the 28th and have the TNT on the night of the 14th also?
And, and or, Mr. Chair, we could just go to the Tu, a regular Tuesday meeting, the 13th.
That'd be the 14th. Yep, 14th.
14th?
Yeah, oh, let me read my calendar, you're right.
I mean, would you consider the board meeting and TNT meeting on Tuesday evening?
Yeah, that way we don't, wouldn't have to be here twice.
Right. And then the second meeting would be the 28th?
You could absolutely do that, you bet, yep.
Nadine, is that the 14th a good date for TNT?
Yes.
Gives her a whole nother week.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's great, yeah. Okay, so, so a regular bar meeting for December would be the 14th and 28th. Okay.
And always.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to accept the calendar as presented, with December, the 2021 meetings to be the 2nd Tuesday, the 14th, along with the TNT meeting at 7:00 PM. And then the second meeting of the month would be the 28th.
Mr. Chair? Commissioner Johnson, I think it's, the TNT usually starts at 6 o'clock.
Thank you, yep.
Uh, well, again, that's your call. This has to start at 6:00 PM and later. You could first start at 7:00 if you wanted, or you could start earlier.
So I'd amend, so I'd amend that the TNT would be at 6:00, and our regular board meeting would follow up at 7:00.
Okay. And then regular meeting to follow, okay.
That'd be a great idea. I'll second that motion for that one.
Okay, any further discussion? So, we're gonna, you, your motion means to use all the dates except the December ones, move that to the 14th.
Right, so as, the calendar as presented, with the exception of the December date, so the December 14th date would be a 6:00 PM TNT meeting and a 7:00 PM regular county board meeting.
Okay.
And then the second meeting of the month would be the 28th.
Okay. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Give me a few seconds, getting my phone under control.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, then we'll move to the consent agenda. Approve or amend the regular meeting minutes of December 15th? Number two, approve or amend the special minutes, meeting minutes of December 15th? Approve or amend the special meeting minutes of December 16th, 2020? Accept and file the committee of the whole of December 14th, 2020? Set the 2021 per diem rate for county board and commissioners at $60? Number six, adopt resolution, use an alternative method to dismantle bids and request for proposal, proposals? Number seven, approve the 2021 tobacco license applications from Adams Tobacco Shop. Number eight, adopt resolution approving application for Minnesota lawful gambling premises, permit and lease for lawful gambling activities from Minnesota Fishing Museum at Minimart at 2378 Pine Road Northwest and Rice, and number, and number 10 at 1490 110th Street Northwest and Rice. And number nine, approve appointments, reappointments to the Board of Adjustments, Roy Schneider, Planning Commission, Mary Johowa, Warren Peschel Jr., and Solid Waste Advisory Committee of Steve Palacet, and, uh, from the Department of Development. Anybody want any of these pulled for further discussion? Hearing not all, entertain a motion. I'll motion to approve consent agenda as ruled.
There's a second?
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Monty?
All right, thanks. All right. So this is item, this is item two, it's in agreement with the Benton Economic Partnership for them to administer a new source of state funding for business assistance grants. Benton County, we will receive 807,000 from the state appropriation, of which 20, excuse me, 2.5% can be spent for grant administration costs. I, unfortunately, my agenda says 25%, it's 2.5. It works out to almost $20,000 can be used for administrative costs. This, this agreement is, is very similar to the one that the County Board adopted for the CARES grants. Michelle Meyer, Assistant County Attorney, drafted it. We just made a few changes for this, this new state grant program. The different administrative amount is one of the key features, and also just some different labels and, and deadlines. The, the, we corrected the agreement itself to show 2.5% rather than 25%. And one of the other differences would be, is the deadline, and this is on page, the, this page is numbered. It's, uh, under the responsible as a parties. One of the key features here is that B, this is under item 1H. BEP shall complete its review of applications and make funding recommendations no later than March 15th. That is the deadline the state has imposed for local governing boards, county boards to make those funding decisions. What I understand is that the dollars don't actually have to be out the door until April 1st, but the last opportunity you have to make a funding decision is March 15th. So again, all of the aspects of this agreement are, are very similar to the agreement that you all adopted for the CARES grant program. BEP receives the applications, then their committee reviews them, makes recommendations to you all, and the final decision then on funding would rest with, with you all, so. I think, are questions for me on the agreement itself?
Um, I guess my, my question would be to Amanda that, with the agreement and the experience that you have, that it won't be quite such a workload this time?
Right. It should be a little bit easier this time.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Amanda, do you anticipate doing two rounds, or just trying to do it all in one round?
You can come on up if you please, yeah.
Good morning, Chair, members of the county commissioners. So, Chair and Commissioner Heinon, we anticipate that the majority of the funds would be expended in round one. However, we're gonna reserve another round for any additional applications that come in, but we anticipate the majority of the applications to be funded in round one.
So how much time will you need for round two before the March 15th cutoff? Couple of weeks?
Yeah, I would think just a couple of weeks. I anticipate that the majority of the applications would be received between now and the end of January, and then I'd bring it back to the County Board in beginning of March, at your March, I think it's second meeting, or the first meeting in March, which is, I think, March 2nd, so. Do you want me to go over the program real quick with you? I know that's.
First, you'll get a motion and action on the agreement, and then, and then Amanda's got all the parameters.
Okay. So, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to accept the plan with Benton Economic Partnership, the agreement?
All second?
Is there, did you make a motion or a second?
We got it.
You motioned?
I made a motion first.
Oh, you did? You made the motion?
No, I didn't make the motion.
No, go ahead, Beth.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Second. So, motion's been made and seconded to get into agreement with Benton Economic Partnerships to administer the grant money for the, this, this round. Is there any other discussion? Now you can.
All right. All right, thank you.
Did you have something to say? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
And Amanda, Amanda, before you begin, beginning, we should just note that for board members, you have the revised, yeah, if we could work off these on your DAS, yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Ones that were mailed out to you and also online on the packet. Um, so I was just gonna go over some of the parameters on the Business Relief Fund and the guidelines, and kind of quickly kind of go over that. I know you had some time to review the information that was in your packet, and then, if you have any questions, please feel free to, to interrupt and ask those questions. So, basically, how we had, we've learned a lot since our last application and program through the CARES grants, and what to expect kind of as we receive applications and, and how to process them and administer the program. With this, with the Business Relief Funds that we've received now from the state, we created a program that kind of categorizes the two, two different tiers of businesses, if you will. So, in tier one, businesses, and we've categorized businesses and veteran service organizations as eligible applicants in this ru, in this tier, and those applicants were required to rec, close as a result of the Governor's Executive Order 20-99. And that's really what we're focusing on in this program, is that new executive order. They would receive a direct business relief payment from the, from the state, so it's some of these organizations that would, with the exception of the veteran service organizations. It's not understood yet if they're gonna receive any sort of payment from the Department of Revenue, and so we wanted to categorize those veteran service organizations in that tier one category, because they have also been some of the hardest hit during this, the COVID pandemic. And so we categorized them in the tier one, even though they may be exempt from the Department of Revenue payment that they're gonna be receiving. So, BEP plans to prioritize and expedite these requests in order to provide that temporary relief to the tier one businesses while they await those state payments. Again, with the exception of the veteran service organizations, we, we would categorize them in that tier one category. And then the tier two, if you can, if you think of this as kind of a catch-all, those are the businesses and nonprofits who've been affected by the Governor's Executive Orders, and they are not eligible to receive those direct payments from the Department of Revenue, but they may be experiencing some significant losses as a result of the COVID pandemic. So we, we put that into a, a separate category so that, you know, they are still eligible for the program, provided they meet a 20%, you know, I guess we would, we would consider a 20% loss of revenue or sales year over year, as we would prioritize those businesses in receiving these funds. So, they would also be eligible to receive up to $10,000, with, with the caveat that if their loss in revenue is, you know, if, if we're looking at the loss of revenue and from 2019 to 2020, and it doesn't meet quite that $10,000 range, they would only be eligible for whatever that loss is. Unless they're a sole proprietor, we categorize those a little bit different, they would receive up to half of, of the eligible benefit, so up to $5,000 or half of, of that amount. So, um, so you have your tier one, and we kind of broke it out between eligible and ineligible businesses, and then the amount of grant and, and use of grant funds in the application process, we wanted to make it very clear what application, what the application process is, and then also what we expect to receive as far as documentation. So the documentation that we're going to be requesting from the businesses is gonna be their profit and loss statements, their W-2, their, their tax return to know, to know that they are an eligible business. And then also, they have to be in good standing with the Secretary of State, and, and not have any taxes owed to the state. So we, we will take a look at all of that in order to determine eligibility. And again, the profit and loss statements priority will be given to the businesses that experience a loss of, of 20% or greater during those comparison periods of November and December 19, and November and December of 20. And then the tier two, kind of the same layout as far as the guidelines go, and this is, you know, the eligible businesses and nonprofits, this is the catch-all, if you will, and then some of the ineligible businesses. So, ineligible businesses would be the businesses where delivery or takeout was the primary source of activity or primary source of revenue prior to March, so it's, those businesses may not be as hard-hit as some of the, the businesses in, in the hospitality industry that, that, that wasn't their primary source of revenue. Independent contractors, franchises, and businesses and nonprofits that derive income from passive investments or real estate transactions. So we, we saw kind of a lot of that at the, I shouldn't say a lot of that, but a couple of applications came in last time for real estate and investment companies, and it kind of, you know, it's been determined that that's just not an eligible use of funds. So we wanted to make that very clear in, in this new program. And then, of course, tier two, the business, businesses that receive Business Relief Funds directly from the state of Minnesota would not be eligible under the tier two, but those businesses would be eligible under the tier one. So the application period, we expect that application to be up online this, this afternoon, so January 5th, and will close January 29th. And then the application, a draft application is also included in your packet that we've put together, so we may modify that just slightly, but otherwise, it is for your consideration this morning. And then, of course, and then finally, I just wanted to note that there is a supplemental, we, we kind of put it in there as a round two or supplemental award, so if, if there is any money left over at the end of the first round, we can go back and, and either open up the application process, or distribute the funds appropriately according to the guidelines that we've put together already, so.
Chair? Amanda, have, has the BEP Board decided at all at this point of any kind of audit procedures on, like, past CARES money, or what you're gonna maybe go forward with these dollars? Have you done any kind of auditing at all?
Auditing is in far of.
Well, like you, it talks about one of the criteria, you know, they're signing an agreement acknowledging that the business will use the funds.
Yes. Yep.
So, is the, has the BEP at this point decided to do any auditing of funds that have already been given, or funds that now will be appropriated?
So, the funds that have already been awarded to businesses, those, we've already requested documentation from them, so we have all the documentation already from them. And those businesses, I think maybe what you mean, are they eligible for this program as well?
Well, no, not necessarily eligible. Have, have you audited that indeed they're using the dollars for what they're intended?
Yes, yes, because in the first round, we requested receipts and documentation how they're spending the funds, so that was definitely the case. they're spending the funds. So that was definitely the case in the first round, so yes, I mean.
Same thing we'll carry forward.
It'll be a little bit different this round because there's not as much, there's not a lot of guidance on that, but what BEP and our board has decided to do is request upfront how they're gonna be spending that money and then going back and requesting them to provide receipts and documentation after they receive the funds. It's just, it's a lot cleaner process than how we were administering it in the beginning because I think there was a lot of confusion.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions? Amanda, I got one question on the applications and the documentation. Is there a timeframe on how long we have to keep this stuff that we're getting?
There's really not any guidance on how long we need to keep the documentation for. I think we're gonna keep it as long as necessary. I mean, you know, because we have kind of all the files put together and archived already, so I think we'll just keep it as long as.
Okay, but there's no, it doesn't state that we have to keep it for five years or three?
It really doesn't. Nothing in the documentation that I've been reading has indicated that.
Right. Hey, thanks.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions you have on the guidelines or the program itself?
Guess not.
All right. Do we need a motion to approve the guidelines, Monty?
That would be great, yes.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt Benton County State-funded business assistant grant policy.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then we have construction of a separate bike and pedestrian trail between the City of Rice and Benton River Park. Is that Monty or is that Chris?
I think we're ready for Nadine.
I think we're ready for, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's later in the meeting. Yeah, I think we're ready for Nadine.
Go back.
9:20 Nadine?
Good morning and welcome to the new commissioners.
Good morning.
All right, so every year annually, we need the Benton County Board to approve who we're gonna use for the publications that were required to put in the paper, according to the state guidelines. So the first thing that you'll find in your packet is we did receive a new updated quote from the Benton County News and the Sauk Rapids Herald for the upcoming year. They are proposing a 2% increase in the publication costs for the new year. We have not seen an increase from them in two years. So this is a first increase in two years. Additionally, they are still willing to offer the county the 30% discount that they do not offer to anyone else. That 30% discount is only if we approve to be running the publications in both papers. So if the decision was made to only go with one paper, then we would not be receiving that 30% discount for the upcoming year for our publications.
Mr. Chair, excuse me. Nadine, how long have we been doing both publications?
Uh, well.
I would say easily a decade, probably about 12 years or so.
Since I've been here, but I know it's been a lot longer.
Okay, thank you. So it's nothing new?
No.
It's nothing new.
No, no, and, 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 you know, the circulation of those papers hits different areas. Of course, the Benton County News is circulated in Benton County. That is, that is a paid subscription. There's just over, I think, 1,100 subscribers to the Benton County News that receive that on a weekly basis. And then the Sauk Rapids Herald, of course, is delivered to Sauk Rapids area Rice and Sartell, and that publication is just over 5,000 is the circulation of that. So we're hitting a really good spectrum of Benton County residents by doing both of the circulations. So any other questions regarding the publications in the paper? It looks like we should review the bids that were given to us, so the bids this year. And again, yes, there is a slight 2% increase. The Sauk Rapids Herald will be 907 per column inch. Last year, it was 890 per column inch. The Benton County News this year would be 816 per column inch, and last year it was $8 per column inch. So as you can see, even with the slight increase in the publication costs overall, on that big spreadsheet that was provided from the paper to you guys, the bottom line is maybe, maybe a thousand dollars difference at the end of the year with the increase. So, and these numbers were based on last week when she printed her spreadsheet for us. So there's a few stragglers here at the end of the year that aren't included in this total. But I would like to ask you to make a motion to go ahead and designate both of those papers for our primary publication for the new 2021 year.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the Benton County News and Sauk Rapids Herald as our official publications for the 2021 year.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second to adopt the Benton County News and the Sauk Rapids Herald for publication of financial statements, delinquent taxes, commissioner proceedings, and public notices for the year 2021. Is there any other discussion? Hearing not all in favors, comment aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda for me is we are, again, annually required to designate the auditor treasurer as the authority to, for the depository banks that are approved by the board. So this is kind of a two-step process. First, we were asking for, I'm asking for a motion for you to re-designate me as the custodian, as you will say, of depositing on the county funds in the depositories that you will approve today. And then the second part of this will be, on the backside of that agenda item, you will see a resolution that we will need to designate all of those banks and depositories for the upcoming year. Do we have some questions on this?
Anybody got any questions? I guess I have a question. How much do we use the magic fund?
How much do we use a magic fund? So the magic fund, that money, all the state and grant money that comes through to the county automatically is put into that magic fund. It filters through the magic fund from the state. So that fund has quite a bit of revenue in it, quite a bit of money in that account. And that's what we use it for primarily is that those funds coming in from the different agencies that come in are put into the magic fund.
Okay.
So, yep.
So we need two motions here?
Yeah, so, one to go ahead and re-designate me as the authority to, for the depository banks for the year.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to re-designate auditor treasurer the authority to designate depository banks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second to designate Nadine as our auditor treasurer to, for the depositor, to be the custodian of the money of the county virtually.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Before we move on that, Mr. Chair, just a quick question, Nadine. Is it possible, I understand this is probably a moving target, but at some point in the future to get kind of a rough breakdown on how much dollar, how many dollars are at each individual?
Absolutely.
Just for informational purposes, this is how much money we have here.
Absolutely. I'm more than, more than willing to give that information to you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now we need to designate the list of depository banks and trusts that we have there for.
So the list on the resolution remains the same. These are the bank institutions that we are currently using for the county's money. There, I don't anticipate any additions to that for the new year, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Nadine, I know when we are doing our onboarding, we had talked about the number of banks. Would there ever be a chance of going down in the number of banks?
Yeah, so I would like to actually entertain the idea of reducing a few of our banks. The ones that were not really gaining any interest on the funds that are sitting in there, I think it would be wise to go ahead and move those funds to a different account where the county would earn a little more interest. As you know, the interest earned on any of our accounts goes into the general fund. So I'm definitely willing to entertain that idea. I was always curious when I came on board why we had so many. Looking back, it's been longstanding that they've had several different accounts. In talking with other auditor treasurers in the surrounding counties, they don't have nearly the number of bank accounts that we do. So it's something I definitely want to look into for the New Year is reducing that. So, yep. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing not all, call the question.
No, we don't have.
We don't have a motion?
Don't have a motion.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, sign a resolution to designate depository banks for Benton County.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing not all, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
Roxanne.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
The item we have before you this morning is a request for consent by the county board to move forward with the vacation of the plat of St. George Corners South. This property was platted back in 2019 as part of a cluster development, which just means that they are smaller lots and then the area outside of those lots is reserved for and restrict against development. It would be reserved for open space, recreational uses, or agricultural uses, and that's all it can be used for. In that trade, you get to have smaller lots. Since then, the Leasers have requested to vacate that lot but leave in place the right-of-way that is platted. And so I do have, or Mr. Leaser is here to tell you maybe a little more specifically why he's requesting to vacate this. But the action that we are requesting today is to sign a consent that says, as the county, we realize we have an interest in this plat, which is the right-of-way, and we're okay with vacating everything except for that right-of-way.
Does Mr. Leaser wish to comment? Gonna state your name and address, too?
My name is Doug Leaser, 5864 75th Avenue, Northeast Sauk Rapids. And good morning.
Morning.
I guess you, I don't know where you want me to start, but yeah, we want to vacate that south portion. In having them up for sale for a year and a half now, all the feedback I'm getting on them is that the lots are too small and that people don't want to buy them because the lots are too small. So that's the reason why we're vacating them, so.
Any other questions? This does need a motion?
I have a question. What would be the use if it's not the way it is right now?
Right now, it's going back to agriculture, which has been, I mean, farming it in rate or long anyways.
Okay. Motion? Some, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second to vacate the plat of St. George Corners South. Any other discussion? Hearing not all, in favor, say aye.
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 And?
I will abstain.
Okay. So it's four, four to nothing with one abstention? Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a point for informational purposes. The rest of the vacation process is through the courts.
Yep.
Okay.
So. Thank you.
Amen. I'll recess the regular board meeting to conduct a human services board meeting. So I will call the human services board to order, and the first order is to select a human services board chair. So I'm open for nominations for human services board chair.
I'll nominate Commissioner Heinen for human services board chair.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Motion's been made in second for Commissioner Heinen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now we'll open it up to vice chair nomination for human services. Anybody interested?
Mr. Chair, I'll nominate Scott Johnson.
Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Beth, which one of the first vice chair.
Okay, we got two nominations. Let's see, how we're gonna do this, Monty?
I'm gonna add a lot.
I can see it in your face.
I guess perhaps one could relinquish?
I would relinquish.
Okay.
Steve, you're in charge.
Okay, you relinquish yourself, Commissioner Johnson?
I am gonna relinquish myself as being nominated to as a vice chair of the human services board.
Okay, so then we have the nomination of Commissioner Schlangen to be vice chair of the human services, in case I am not here. Any other discussion? Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next is to approve or amend the agenda. Anything to add to the agenda, Bob?
No.
Okay, I'll need a more, go ahead.
You had, I thought, Bob, you did have one.
Yes, we do, I'm sorry.
You have one item to add?
We have a try cap contract that came at the last moment, so you should have that in front of you.
And that'll be under consent?
Yes.
Anything else to add?
I'd like to say congratulations, both of you, on your new plum assignment.
Okay, I'll need a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda with the addition of item five.
I'll second.
Got a motion as second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Set 2021 human services board meeting dates and times.
Guess I would suggest replicating human county board. That would be probably the way to go.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to replicate our county board meeting dates along with the human services board.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion as second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Consent agenda, approve or amend regular meeting minutes to December 15, 2020. Approve legal and fiscal services contract between Benton County Human Services and community AMHI. Approve coordinator services contract between Benton County Human Services and community AMHI. Approve jail program. Approved jail program grant agreement between Benton County Human Services and Community Adult Mental Health Initiative. And number five. Recommend approval of the two thousand twenty-one contract with TRICAP for volunteer driver services. Anybody, anybody want any of those five pulled?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bob?
I have nothing else for you, and much, I would love to entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions by the board?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, now we are adjourned. I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you, Steve. Um, Monty?
Yep.
The administrator considering applying for federal transportation project?
Okay. Let's see here, let me make sure I got all my stuff. So we're here to ask today your approval to apply for some essentially federal funding that would help us build a, a separated trail from the City of Rice to Ben River Park along Cameroo Fifty-Five. I think it was Chris that let me know about this funding source. Um, so, um, anyway, so it does require, uh, a couple of resolutions, but maybe we should back up a little bit and maybe talk about what it would cost. When I did the, the, the agenda item for you, I had very kind of rough numbers. And Chris has since refined those quite a bit, uh, for a draft application, so I'm gonna put those up on the screen if I can here. So if I could, uh, point out what's up on this screen here, these are again numbers from Chris in terms of eligible and ineligible costs. You can see mobilization, aggregate, by tumus and so on. Looks like the total cost is about a hundred and sixty-five thousand. The, the local commit would be, uh, twenty percent of that plus ineligible cost. So it works out to about forty-five thousand dollars of, of, of local cost. One, one thing I, I don't see on here, and Chris, maybe you can help me with this right-of-way. What, uh, where does that fall into this?
Uh, yeah, it's not shown in here because presumably we're requiring right-of-way for our road project that's happening, uh, this summer in two thousand and twenty-one. So I'm going off of the, the, the notion that we should have plenty of right-of-way in the future, uh, to build this, this trail.
Thanks, yeah, I've been thinking about that, yeah, thank you, Chris.
So, uh, a few things is, this is for actually federal fiscal year tw- two thousand and twenty-five funding. Uh, Chris tells me though that, uh, counties can actually advance these projects and do the concern. So once you get a sense that you get approval, you, you know you're gonna get approval, you can go ahead and front the money and you get reimbursement later. So that is a possibility. Sources of funds for the forty-five thousand, uh, we have dollars sitting in our CIP fund. There might be a little park dedication we can use, not too much. Uh, most of it might come from what, what's sitting in our CIP fund right now. So, uh, this again would be a separated trail. I'm not sure, would you, you're anticipating it would be on, let me think here for a second, the west side, Cameroo Fifty-Five?
Um, I guess I don't really know.
Not sure yet, okay.
Yeah, I think those costs would be for either said west or east side, we can.
Okay.
Those details could be worked out later.
Chris, um, uh, it's just a couple of thoughts is, uh, is, we had to do an initial letter, uh, like a, a letter of interest, and it was, it was deemed eligible to move on the process, so that's a good sign. Uh, the folks that reviewed these at MINDOT seemed to like what they saw, and they allowed us to continue on the process. Uh, so hopefully that's, that, there is a good decent chance that this could get funded in the future. I think that's really.
I, I guess.
Applications due, of course, the applications due the eighth of January, so.
Um, so this is a separate trail from the reconstruction, so we, we will have enough right-of-way, or are we just gonna purchase the right-of-way?
Well, we're, so we're, we're purchasing sixty feet of right-of-way from the center of the road. We have that on one side of the roadway, and we're, we're doing it on the east side of the roadway as part of this, this current project. So my hope is that we should be able to squeeze in a trail on that farthest side away from the, the roadway within that, that sixty feet. So that's why the right-of-way costs are not included in here. Um, they're ineligible anyways for this grant funding, so. I noted that in later in the application, it does, there's a section that asks for that, and that's what I put in that section was that we're anticipating acquiring right-of-way as part of a current road project, so.
So, do you think we would be, uh, safer to acquire a little extra runway, say, you know, if we were doing the west side? Or do you think, I mean, are we gonna be safe? We ain't gonna run into anything down the road where the right-of-way's not gonna be enough?
That's always maybe a good idea. I think we, we'd be, it would be easier to acquire right, additional right-of-way on the east side of the roadway. Uh, if you could picture it, there's more development on the west side of the roadway. So any additional beyond sixty feet, we're encroaching closer to, uh, homes. So, um, that may be something we could have a discussion now. Um, I'm hoping to tag on to a committee of the whole coming up to talk about the Cameroo Fifty-Five project, so maybe the discussion we can have then about acquiring some additional, um, beyond sixty feet.
I guess as long as we can't use money to purchase the right-of-way, it's not no real big deal right now.
Yep.
What, what is on the east side that's?
Right now, there's one business, there's trucking, uh, trucking company, and then it's agricultural fields right now.
Yeah.
That at one point, uh, was being marketed, uh, for sale, so that may be, that's why, the reason why I think it may be a little bit easier to acquire additional easement if they're looking to sell that anyways.
The farmland or the?
Yeah, the farmland was, was for sale. One time, there was for sale signs up there as recently as this last summer, I think, so.
And then can we use, like, when we get to the edge of the, where the park starts on the east side, we can approach on that without any problems, you know, using some of that right-of?
So Monty and I had a brief discussion about that. Uh, it's something we probably want to bring up to the park commission, but I believe that the county boards ultimately have approval, uh, to do that. Um, trail, and that's something when we get into doing that, we'll, we'll work out the nuances. Trail easements are a little bit different than highway easements, and the reason I mention that is, um, in-state law, in a highway easement, public utilities have a right to be in highway easements. They, public utilities don't necessarily have a right to be in parkland or in trail easements. So when we go to do the final paperwork, we want to probably work out those nuances of where, where's highway easement? Where things like telephone and electricity can be, and where's trail and parks where we don't want, uh, you know, telephone and utilities and gas lines and stuff like that. So that's why it seems clear, but, uh, it gets muddy in a hurry, so.
Mr. Chair?
Amen.
Chris, at this time, uh, I would assume it would be beneficial for us to do that trail when we're doing the project, the road project?
Well, well, timing is always key. So we're, we're moving forward with doing the road project in two thousand and twenty-one. As, as Monty noted, this is federal fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Um, which actually starts October first of two thousand and twenty-four, uh, to make it even more confusing. We could, if, if we were successful in acquiring the grant, we could enter into an agreement with MINDOT to do an advanced construction. Um, but realistically though, we would, it still pushes it out a year before we could even be constructed because we would still have to design the plans to meet federal requirements and go through that federal plan review process, which takes time. Um, and that's why, if we're doing the road construction in two thousand and twenty-one, we realistically will not be able to do that, uh, at the same, trail at the same time. We, we could, we could construct it early with our own funds and, and get into an agreement to get reimbursed when federal funds become available. We're still obligated to go through the federal plan review process, which takes time.
So the property owners are aware of, of your expansion, or?
Yeah, so we're working with the City of Rice. The City of Rice is working on acquiring that additional easement on the east side. We're working on acquiring additional easement, uh, as part of that as well. So right now though, the, the residents are aware of a road construction project, maybe not necessarily a pedestrian trail, uh, at the edge of that. So that would, something that, yeah, would still have to be worked out with civilian owners as well, so. I mean, it's in our best interest to, to keep them informed as much as we know.
Mr. Chair?
But right now, we've been moving forward as a road project, not necessarily a trail project.
The first part, correct me if I'm wrong, the first part of this is that the agreement's gotta be in by January eighth or the, the application.
Yes, sir.
So regardless of when it's constructed, we should really move on that if we're gonna definitely go forward. So with that, I, I would make a motion to approve the county to be the sponsor of the TAP funding construction project for the bike trail, pedestrian trail.
Yeah, and then, and thank you for that. So we would need to actually, yeah, the, the first would be, as you see in the packet, you've got two resolutions, and MINDOT's requiring these two resolutions, and that's why they're in there. Uh, the first one is where you agree to act as a project sponsor, and it also says you're agreeing to sponsor and you're also agreeing to secure the local funding, uh, the local share of costs and so on and so forth. And it, it also appoints Chris Berg, county engineer, as the authorized agent, uh, to act on the county's behalf. That's your first resolution. I think that's, is that the one you were looking at?
That's the one. I didn't know if you wanted those.
And then there's a second one, we'll get to that one in a second.
I'll second that.
Great.
Okay, motion's been sa, made in seconded to get into agreement for the alternative tra, um, transportation alternative project. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
And then secondly, it's up on your screen is, the second thing that MINDOT requiring is a resolution where you, you agree to operate and maintain the facility for its useful life. It doesn't redefine what useful life is, but, uh, it sounds like a long time. So, um, that's the purpose of the second resolution. So we could ask your consideration of this second resolution where the county agrees to operate and maintain the facility for its useful life.
Mr. Chair? So Chris, have you put any thought into this of, uh, how much maintaining's gonna cost us? Uh, how much, uh, removing the snow off the, uh, the trail and everything?
To be honest, uh, no. Um, this resolution though is pretty typical of any kind of grant, uh, application, uh, that we've done. Uh, this doesn't preclude us from getting into an agreement, at least I don't believe. I don't think it precludes us from getting into agreement with, uh, another entity to perform that maintenance for us. Um, recently, we did something with the City of Foley. The City of Foley applied for these same kind of funds and got the money for this trail that they built along Highway Twenty-Five. We had to be the project sponsor. We required a resolution to maintain it, but in that resolution, we had listed, um, that Foley is agreeing to, and I think at their city council, they adopted a similar resolution that they were agreeing to maintain, uh, that trail. So basically, they're saying, the feds are saying, if we give you money, we don't want you to build this project with our money and then turn around and give it to some other entity or try to sell it. They, they want to make sure that it's, it's staying in public ownership for its useful life, uh, which like Monty noted, it's, it's undefined what the useful life of the trail is.
So maybe going back to some of the maintenance issues, uh, I guess I was expecting if it ever needed to be crack-filled, we could ask Highway to crack-fill it for us. Uh, you know, I, I've noticed some, some paper shows they typically get a seal coded on some frequency. Um, I wasn't expecting that we would ever do snow removal on it though. I think if we do snow removal on this trail, we'd expect to do snow removal on the trails in the park. And at this point, we have not done snow removal on trails in the park. So I guess that might be a discussion for another day. We simply don't have the staff resources to do snow removal.
Mr. Chair, uh, just to open your eyes a little bit, coming from my previous position with all of the parks and trails we had in the City of Sauk Rapids, we always got phone calls wondering why they weren't, the snow was not removed on the trails.
Yeah.
All the time.
Yeah. Well, we've gotten requests to plow the, the trails at Ben River, too.
Yeah.
It's a matter of just resources and staff to do it.
Uh, my staff recommendation would be, we, before we do that, before we do any construction, we come up with a clear defined policy of what we do, um, so we can always hang our hat on, we're following our adopted policy. You know, in, in some cases, that's perfectly acceptable, maybe to leave it as a snow-covered trail, and it's a, it's for cross-country skiing and not for pedestrian.
And snowmobiles?
So, yeah, so.
Well, just, I just want clear definition though, when it comes to that point in time, because we will all be getting calls. Actually, Commissioner Pop will be getting more of them.
I agree. I think that behooves us to come up with a policy on how we're, uh, dealing with trails, so.
Cause once it's put there, they're gonna use it, and then they're gonna use it in the wintertime, especially if this pandemic keeps going on and everyone's outside nowadays in the wintertime.
How long is the trail?
Mile.
So, yeah, it's about a mile in length from, I, I measured that from where there's some existing trails in the park up to, uh, the city, it's in discussion with the City of Rice. They have a vacant lot that they own that they plan to develop into a little city park future. So that's where the length that I measured is, just right at a mile.
So is that park on the west side of Fifty-Five or the east side?
The park is on the west side, cause that was, that was dedicated as part of the, of a development, a plat, platted development.
Yeah.
The unfortunate is that, you know, as part of a development, all the houses built up in that development, and so now we don't have room to build additional trails, I, I don't think on that side. So maybe we need to, we, we'll end up having road crossings.
Yeah, it'd just be nice to have this, this few road crossings as possible.
Sure, for sure.
Especially on a high-speed road.
Mr. Chair? Chris, if we move forward on this, um, you're gonna make the City of Rice aware that if we, we decide we need to buy more right-of-way than what we, the sixty feet, you'll make them aware?
Yeah, so the timing's gonna be really critical. We're applying for it now, like Monty said, it's due this Friday. We realistically will not know if we're successful or not till probably March or April. Uh, we would like to be advertising or awarding bids for construction in, in April as well. Yeah, so, and I do know the City of Rice is applying for a, a grant for the same, uh, program. So we'll be competing with the City of Rice along with about eleven other counties in central Minnesota for about a million and a half dollars. So, um, I will certainly keep them informed of it. Um, they'll, they'll see the list of, um, this project as well.
Mr. Chair, so at that point in time, Chris, wouldn't it be beneficial for both parties to join in on one grant process instead of fighting against each other?
As being part of these grants, uh, seeing these being awarded in the past, I think that would have a negative effect because the trail that they're applying for is on the east side of Highway Ten.
Oh, okay.
And so trails that have been successful through this program have been those that have been regional in nature.
Right.
Uh, old railroad-grade trails have been really popular, are being, uh, awarded. I think that would, that would be a detriment to both of our applications because they're not, the two trail segments are not connected, they're on opposite sides of the town, they seem to serve different, uh, needs. And I just believe that that would have a negative effect on our applications if we try to combine them.
Mr. Chair, I got one more question.
Sure.
Monty, do you know how much money we have in our park dedication fund?
There is approximately a grand total, about eighty-five thousand, but it's spread out in twelve little buckets.
Yep, yeah. So we tapping into some of that then for maintenance and all that too, or?
Uh, we could if, if the townships that contribute consent would consent, they'd have to consent.
Right.
We'd have to ask them if they would consent to release it for this purpose.
Okay, thank you.
So we could always ask.
We, we don't have anything in the county's park dedication fund, right?
No, we pretty about tapped that out. What's, what's left now is the township dollars, yeah.
I believe in the past, we did ask the township, you know, for the, using their dollars for the park.
No, I know, I know some townships, you know, want to have is, has donated money for things in the past, and this may be something they did. Um, Langola has always give theirs to the county.
And I, I'm sorry, I didn't, didn't have this number. If there's money in the Langola, uh, account, we could use it without their approval. I mean, I know that, that issue's come in the past that we should be asking the township, so maybe we should. We don't have to. Uh, but if we, if there's money in Langola, we could use it for that purpose. The other townships, we'd have to have their consent.
Okay.
I'm done.
Thank you.
So we need a motion?
So on this, this last resolution. And that's the one on the maintenance, agreement to maintain?
Agreement to maintain, so.
I'll make a motion on the agreement to maintain the park trail.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded for the agreement to maintain the trail if we're successful for the life of the trail. Any other discussion? Otherwise, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Alrighty, let's see, what is next? Letters under steam. So, uh, we were approached by the sheriff's office about, uh, concerns that some employees of the sheriff's office would be unable to use. of the sheriff's office would be unable to use their, uh, vacation, which is their vacation in excess of two-hundred-and-eighty-eight hours by December thirty-first. Right now, all the law enforcement contracts allow them to go above two-hundred-and-eighty-eight hours, but they've gotta be down to two-eighty-eight by December thirty-first. And there was a concern that because of the pandemic and so on and so forth, they would not be able to use that time in December and get down to two-eighty-eight and then would quote, lose time. So, um, we had some discussion, I believe you may recall in the strategy session, uh, that agreed to extend that deadline from December thirty-first to March first, uh, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, our labor attorney Frank Madden drafted this, uh, letter of understanding, or he calls it a memorandum of understanding, and he provided to each of the four, uh, union business agents, um, your packet did not include the one from Teamsters Licensed Supervisors, Teamsters three-twenty. We have that one now, that was the one that was put on your, your, the dais. So we now have, uh, signed MOUs from each of our four law enforcement groups agreeing to this, to this change. So again, it just, it's a one-time temporary, uh, extension to March thirty-first, excuse me, March first, two thousand and twenty-one, for those folks to use that time in excess of two-hundred-and-eighty-eight hours. So we just need a motion, you could just like a blanket to approve all four LOUs if you'd like.
Okay, I think we had that discussion.
Yes, yes, sir, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the LOUs, all four of them, as presented.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve all four of the LOUs, uh, presented by our labor attorney and signed by the unions. Is there any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Alright. Monthly financial report. Normally this is in consent agenda or the consent packet, but I thought, you know, with our new board members, I, I'd be nice to review it. Um, historically, this has been in your packet every month, but for better or worse, uh, issues the past nine months or so has made it very difficult to get it done every month. And so sometimes you may, you, you may not see it in your packet. It's certainly my goal to get back to the point of having this in your packet every month. Um, but I'd just like to cover a few things, if I may, about this, uh, report. So it's through November, the latest actuals that I had when I did this, uh, you could see for each, each department, you show, you see revenues expenditures, adopted budget, actuals for each month, year-to-date totals, and then, uh, a variance. Now, the variance number assumes that you're gonna spend a normal one-twelfth every month and, and there are many cases where that just isn't true. You don't spend a nice even one-twelfth every month, you don't receive your revenue in a nice even one-twelfth. So what I try to do with your footnotes is explain to them the more significant variances, kinda let you know, is there, is there really a problem here or is it just something normal and here's the reason? So you see a lot of footnotes, hopefully those were, were generally clear, what was going on there. Typically, uh, the reason for a significant variance would be, um, you, you maybe receive the revenue in one large installment per year, uh, or you make a, a payment in one large installment per year, so that tends to distort things a bit. Um, so amongst all of these, um, probably the only place which is, I think, clearly a, um, a, a definite drop-off in revenue would be the inmate boarding revenue, and that's in your footnote, uh, number eleven. Uh, I'll just back, back up to that one. Let's see here, so sheriff's office, you can see we budgeted for three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand of inmate boarding revenue in two thousand and twenty, but it only received a hundred and ten thousand through the end of November. And you can see, of course, how that just drops, has just dropped off to essentially nothing the last couple of months, no inmate boarding revenue. So that's a significant, uh, drop-off of way below what was expected. And of course, that revenue estimate would have been done in the summer of two thousand and eighteen, so that's obviously, no one knew about pandemics in those days, so. So that's one place where we've seen a significant, uh, disruption of our revenue was in inmate boarding. Um, uh, one thing, of course, you see this, this extraordinary, uh, uh, variance is back, I'm, I'm backtracking a little bit, is under emergency management. Uh, you can see, was it two-thousand percent variance? Uh, this is where we dumped all the cares funding. So you can see, for example, the revenue there, five million dollars of emergency management revenue, that's where all the cares funding went in and that's where it's all been paid out. So, uh, that's, that explains the whole issue with emergency management is the care, the cares funding. We wanted to set some separate accounting so we could track, what are we, what are we bringing in, what are we spending and so on? So that's where that all landed, was in emergency management. Before I move on, do you all have any questions of me, of any of the, the footnotes, anything would you like additional explanation of any of the footnotes? Or anything you've seen in those first couple pages? No? Okay. Alrighty. So if I could move on then to, this is page six, the restricted revenue. So what is this stuff? Well, restricted revenue fund is, uh, it's this big bucket where we put all these different kinds of revenues which typically have a statutory restriction or the county board has adopted perhaps a resolution to say these monies are restricted for a specific purpose. So it's a whole collection of lots of different kinds of, of resources which are restricted either, either again by statute or county board action. Um, maybe what I can do is highlight just a few of the larger ones. You can see bottom line, there's a balance right now of five-point-four million dollars in this fund, uh, three-point-five million of that is a solid waste fund, that is a ten-dollar special assessment on your property taxes for solid waste management. That is, of course, by far the largest portion of this fund. Um, a couple of other larger ones, SCAR grant, three-hundred-and-fifty, those are the, the dollars for recycling projects, recycled products. Another pretty large, uh, pot is the nine-one-one. This is that special surcharge on your phone bill, which, and those researches can only be used, uh, for technology and improvements inside the dispatch center, what we call the PSAP. Money can only be used inside the PSAP. So those are two or three of the larger ones. You can see lots of smaller ones, um, but again, they, they, they sit here because either the statute says they're specifically restricted or there has been passed county board action to make them restricted. Long time ago, all this used to sit in our general revenue fund and we created this special revenue fund because it really distorted, if you had five million dollars sitting in your rep, general revenue fund, it really distorted what was truly available and truly unrestricted. So it's good to kinda get all this stuff out of there so you can see, okay, in the general revenue fund, what is truly unrestricted? What's truly available? So, as you, are there, any of the, any of these specific funds, you'd like an, uh, explanation? I'd be like, what's this stuff for and how's it come in, how's it used? I'd be happy to, to, to answer any questions about, about all of these and each one has a history, so. Any of them catch your eye that you'd like an explanation on? You can see park dedications now, oh, my, my guess was pretty close, eighty-seven thousand, eighty-seven thousand for park dedication.
Mr. Chair, Monty, I have a question, um, county board contingency, what does that mean?
Sure. Well, in the old days, that was called a commissioner's suspense account and it really is a contingency. Uh, so something unexpected comes up, you know, it's not budgeted for, uh, that the county board wants to address, uh, this is, this is there and available for that. So let's just say something comes up with some department, they say, hey, you know, we don't have the resources for this. It's kind of a go-to. It used to be a lot larger, we've just pared it down over the years to this, to a small, a much sma, it used to be easily twice that number, but, um, we haven't needed to tap into it a whole lot the last few years, so, but that's, that's where it is. It's just a, kind of a, again, as it says, a contingency. It used to be called the suspense account and I have no idea why it was called suspense account.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
What would be in the jail inmate capital expenditures?
Sure. Yep. So the revenue is derived from basically commissaries, so when inmates purchase food or they do phone calls, this kinda stuff, all that, all that, that revenue is, stays in this fund and it's used for generally improvements inside the jail. It doesn't have to be, historically, the board has, has set that money aside for capital projects that come up inside the jail. So it's been, you know, if something unexpected comes up, like a hot water heater fails, this has been a great source of funds to go to for stuff like that, yeah.
Would we, would we tap into that if we expand that wall?
I think you could, certainly, yeah, yeah, yeah. Again, it's, it, it isn't legally or statutorily restricted. Historically, the board has chosen to treat it that way and, and use it for things inside the jail.
Thank you.
Yep, yep. Any other questions on this whole restricted fund? Okay?
The victim assistance grant, I assume we didn't get one?
The, what's that all about or why is it, why is it a negative?
Yeah.
Victim assistance? Yeah, well, about, uh, two or three years ago, the county attorney's office received a grant from the state to add another victim assistance person and we set it up in this restricted fund because we thought that was, it's gonna be very short-term, uh, and, uh, but it's continued on for, for, for a few years now. The, um, what we do at the end of the year is when the grant money comes in, it's dumped into the county attorney's general revenue budget and then, when, at the end of the year, we'll transfer over enough to essentially zero this out, to cover that cost. Probably at some point, if this grant just continues to go on and on and on, we probably should just move it over to the county attorney's regular general budget and not have it in this restricted fund. It, it, cause when it first started, this was kinda like a year-to-year thing, but the grant just keeps getting renewed. And it began, allow them to hire an additional victim assistance person. Yeah. Any others catch your eye? Okay. Alrighty. Let's, let's see here, okay, the next pa, page is, um, our self-insurance fund, uh, so this is the second year of being self-insured and, uh, it's always nice to kinda see what's going on with, uh, the claims, reinsurance and so on and so forth, track our fund balance. Uh, so it's pretty high level, just showing it, what, what comes into this fund, of course, is employer premiums at county, employee premiums, and then some reinsurance reimbursement. And you can see the various categories of expenditures, medical, pharmacy, dental and so on. And, uh, and the bottom line tracks the, the fund balance. I try to have an ongoing estimate of, of, what is our, our targeted fund balance is, is six months of, of fund expenditures and it looks like, and again, that's always gonna change as you're moving through, as that average rolls forward, but it looks like our target right now is one-point-two million and we're sitting at one-point-two-nine-eight, so we're in pretty good check. Um, our, our reserves in the, in the self-insurance fund are, are in decent shape. And you may recall, uh, as we were talking about using reserves to fund this so-called laser, so that's definitely gonna help us if, if we are facing those expenses. So this is definitely a fund to keep a close eye on as, now that we're in this reinsurance situation.
Question, Monty?
Yeah.
So if you look at the net income of, uh, year-to-date, the five-hundred-and-forty-five thousand?
Yep.
So that, and, and you look at the over-under, the fifty-six-four-ten, so that we're over what you estimated, correct, by fifty-six thousand?
Um, I, I guess I, I, there's really no budget per se for this and I don't really estimate, you know, what our revenue's gonna be, what our expenses. I think too especially, it probably would be fairly easy to estimate revenues because again, that's just employer premiums, you, you know, but, but claims can be so volatile from month to month. I don't even attempt to estimate those, no.
Okay.
No, so there's no adopted budget for this per se, no. Yep. Let's see, and the last one is just, I, where I track specifically the, the commissioner's contingency account. And you can just see a few things that were paid for out there, the, the web streaming was paid for, uh, the board agreed for some additional funding for, for care back, uh, back in June, just a separate tracking of that. And the last thing, is this last thing? Last thing is, uh, just cash balances. Um, the graph just shows our three largest operating funds, revenue, highway and human services, but then all our other governmental funds are listed below their current, their, their current cash balances as of end of November and then historically back to two thousand and eleven. Um, of course, you can see this big spike up here is when the cares funding hit, cares funding arrived. This would be the, the dark, the darkest line, uh, for the general revenue fund, that's where all the cares funding went. Um, you can see with the human services, the yellow, pretty stable, pretty stable cash balance for quite a long time, uh, staying right in there. But you can see, of course, the highway, the red line, a lot more volatile. You'll do a major project, you'll spend a bunch of money, you put some money in, it all goes out, it's, it's, I don't, you know, when we look at our fund balance standards, I don't tend to sort of look very much at the highway fund because of its volatility. We know projects are supported by revenue. It's gonna go up, it's gonna go down. Um, probably the funds you wanna look the most close to that would be, of course, the general revenue fund and then, and then the human services fund. Where do you stand with cash there?
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Monty, uh, in regards to boundary commission, I assume these are dollars that the county spent on the boundary commission over the last year and a half and just have not been assessed yet?
You jumped back someplace, where'd you go?
Um, right straight down on the, uh, boundary commission.
Oh, I'm sorry, ba, okay, yeah, boundary commission. Yeah, so the way that works is we're doing the work, we're paying the bills and then some point later in the year or so, we'll do the assessment and then that'll come back.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and then that deficit will go away, that's right. As soon as it's all wrapped up with Roxanne and attorneys and the courts and then the assessment is certified, then yeah, that'll, that'll eventually go away. Yeah, but we're kinda fr, essentially right now, we're fronting that, yeah. Yeah, we're fronting that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, Monty, if, if you look at the actual cash balance, November twentieth, and you go back to the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, uh, there's a couple million dollar difference, is that at the beginning of two thousand and twenty?
These are averages for the entire, let me think it for a second. Yeah, these, these are average cash balances, so yeah, so obviously it's not, it's not like at, at December thirty-first or, or any other point in the year, it's an average for the entire year, yeah. Uh, you know, I, I guess, I've had this spreadsheet like this way for quite a long time, I, I guess I felt that it's, it's important more to look at averages rather than point in times because that can change so much. So you've got a ton of cash when you receive your property taxes, but then it goes way down.
Yep.
So I, it seems like it's, it's better to look at just an average of, of where you stand.
No, what I, what I was, uh, looking at is if you look at the twenty-four-one-sixty-seven, that's gonna be like the fourth lowest out of ten years.
But, uh, what, what'll happen?
To the highway.
They'll ha, it'll also change a lot, so the second half of property taxes and the second half of county program A will show up in December.
Okay.
So it'll spike back up again.
Spike back, okay.
You bet.
Thank you.
It'll spike back up again, a lot, yeah, it'll spike up a lot, especially too with all that cares money sitting there. Right. So the cash balances will be in really good shape considering having those resources sitting there. And again, like I pointed out, you see this big spike up here, which would be, uh, let's see, that was like, uh, we got the cares funding on, is it August or so? So this, this is again, that big spike up and that stays with us, so.
Monty, will that stay with us for about three year, three years, you said?
Oh, again, I, it really depends upon the pace at which we spend it down.
Okay.
So. Any questions for me on the monthly financial report?
Oh, good job.
Alrighty.
Monty?
Thank you, Monty.
Alrighty.
Good questions.
So, let's see, um, update on facility access, additional measures taking response to COVID pan, pandemic. I thought it might be good just to kind of remind folks where we're at with terms of access ability to our, our buildings. Of course, here, uh, we still have the, um, security person who's, you know, monitoring how, how many folks come in, uh, enforcing the mask-wearing mandate. This has been in place for quite a long time now, uh, seems to be working okay. Um, the, uh, human services remains closed, so folks just can't walk in, that's true for here and East Gate. Uh, people can make appointments, but there's just not unrestricted walking into the building and that's been, frankly, that building has been this way and so has East Gate since March or April. It's been this way for quite a long time and we're gonna seem to be a year that it's been in that condition. We're gonna seem to be a year that it's been in that condition. Um, Sheriff's Lobby is still, is open for walk-in, and so is, so is courts. I, although I understand with courts, they've gone back temporarily halting in-person, uh, jury trials. So really, uh, the access to our buildings is, is the way it's been for several months now. Um, I, I think most departments are comfortable with it. Uh, I don't, I don't hear a desire for easier restrictions. I don't necessarily hear a desire for more restrictions. We seem to sort of settle into, uh, an arrangement that most departments feel comfortable with. And I, I think I just wanna toss it out to you all for thoughts. How do you feel about our current access? Good, bad, should it be more, should it be less? Just wanna make sure I'm hearing from you all too about that.
Mr. Chair? First of all, I'd like to thank our IT guy, Steve, out there for helping us. Because you're the one that created, to help create all of our, our, uh, people being outside of this facility.
Working remotely, yeah.
Working at home.
Thank you.
That was a great, great thing.
I guess, I got a question. How, how are we, do we have people in East Gate, or is it pretty much?
There are a few. I would say, any given day, probably about three or four. And I should say, that's on the 451 side. 425, I think there's two or three over there. Yeah, so.
So out of, we had, say, six out of a possible, we had twenty?
Thirty, yeah. So it's, yeah, it's a small percentage.
Okay.
Mr. Chair? Uh, Monty, are they just doing that by appointments over there at East Gate then?
Right, it's by appointment, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have two questions in regards to the security entrance here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the first one is, would it be a big deal to have that, uh, person parked somewhere else instead of right out?
I'll ask him to.
For our constituents to have somewhere to park? And also, do you have a, a rough estimate, what does it cost to have that, uh, security system?
It's about 1,200 a, a week.
1,200 a week?
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, yep. Other questions, thoughts about, again, just, I'm curious to get your thoughts about the overall level of access we have or don't have?
Seems good to me.
Yeah, I, I think we're doing a really good job considering the circumstances.
I wanted to bring up the issue of the sanitizing service. So we had a meeting of our management team a week or so ago, and I really posed the question, do we still need to continue the ma- the, the sanitizing service? And I had asked Public Health for their thoughts about, do we really need to continue this? And they suggested that, well, maybe it's something we, we maybe could do ourselves. Um, you know, as long as we do it consistently, we should be wearing masks, even if we're behind Plexiglas and so on and so forth. And from what I heard from department heads is that they just didn't feel that they had the staff time to do this themselves. Uh, they would prefer to continue the sanitizing services. Um, it is certainly a not an inexpensive service, it's $50 an annual, 2,000 a week. Um, one that's nice thing is, is, is we, we continue to get some, we, we continue to get 75% FEMA reimbursement for that sanitizing service, that helps a lot. Uh, I understand we may not get FEMA reimbursement for the security service, but we're getting 75% for the sanitizing service. So, uh, the consensus of, of our management team was, let's just continue it for a few months and then regroup and talk about some more in the future. So, um, that's kinda where that is at. Any, any, any thoughts for me on the sanitizing service? Again, that's to our contracted service manager, uh, cleaning company.
I, I think when the funding drops off from FEMA, then, uh, we have to sit and reassess.
Yeah.
Cause it does cost us a lot of money, over a hundred and some thousand.
It's a hundred and four thousand a year on an annualized basis, that's right, yeah.
Okay.
I think if we're convinced that we should continue doing this, we should really exploit a, a temp employee or a county employee. That's vastly cheaper than having a service master do it for us.
Yeah, I think with, uh, an employee and benefits and everything, it was only gonna run around 75,000, I think.
Oh, if even that, yeah, I would say more like probably 50.
Mr. Chair? Yes. Does that number, the 2,000 a, a week include the chemicals?
It does. It includes the chemicals, yes, yes, yeah.
Mr. Chair, Monty, would, uh, we be, uh, able to submit dollars from FEMA for an employee of the county also? Does it matter who's doing the work?
That's a good question. I don't know, I'll have to ask Jackie on that one. Um, I would imagine the answer should be yes. It shouldn't really make a difference whether it's a contractor or an employee, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just a comment, I think as everybody gets vaccinated, or whoever's going to, over the next six months, I think a lot of this is gonna change, and people might revert back to
Yeah.
Not doing as much.
One thing too, I, I's, is read some, some news that really questions the value of wiping everything down so much. Is it really effective, does it really make any difference? I think initially, that's what people thought, hey, you're gonna wipe down everything all the time. And lately, it seems the thinking is, is shifting towards, well, it really isn't making that much of a difference. Transmission isn't occurring much at all, if any, by surfaces. It's, of course, the, the, the respiration that's going on, the droplets in the air. So does it really make, it, is it really necessary to have someone continuously wiping down all these surfaces five days a week?
Yeah.
Maybe not, so.
Commissioner Heinen?
But it helps continue to get the reimbursement, so.
I'd, I'd agree that through the, the FEMA support, at the end of the day, those are still tax dollars. And so I think we should be reviewing this sooner than later, of how, how long we wanna continue to do this.
Yeah.
That's just my opinion.
Okay. Well, I, I definitely think it's good that we as department heads begin to think about an exit strategy for this. In other words, if you think the service should get wiped down, who's, who can do it instead? Uh, maybe you, you wipe down the most common used service, the most heavily used services, and not every doorknob and every, everything everywhere, so.
One last comment, I, I'd be inclined to, if, if we're gonna continue to do that, that we'd hire somebody locally to do that instead of contracting it out?
Yeah. That would make sense. Okay. Um, I think that was it on this. Any other thoughts on access restrictions, cleaning, security? Okay. Let's move on if we made it. Uh, discussion on county board meeting procedures. So, let's see. Um, I thought, well, I, actually, I'm gonna, I will attribute, the, the, uh, the inspiration for this item came from Commissioner Heinen. And, um, a couple of things, maybe things that you, you and I discussed, and then I, ideas that popped into my head. As I thought with three new board members and, and, and a new year, it might be good just to talk about a few procedural issues, about how you run your meeting, uh, and so on. So I, I put these on here, and there, there's no particular order, it was just totally random as they were popping out my head, uh, to put them on this list. Uh, so, and, and feel free, of course, if you wanna add other items or whatever, that's totally fine, so. Consent agenda, consent agenda, to read or not to read? Let's put it this way, you don't have to. There's nothing Robert rules for, it says you have to read the consent agenda. It's more been historic, when I first started, we didn't read the consent agenda. And I was telling Vicky, somewhere along the line, one of our board members started reading the consent agenda, and, and then every generation of board member after that continued the practice. But you don't have to. If you want to, of course, you can, but you don't have to, so.
My opinion would be, we do not do it, we still have the ability to pull a consent item off.
Absolutely, you bet.
I agree with that.
That is correct, it's.
So perhaps in the future, we won't read the consent agenda, okay?
Just, Mr. Chair, just go A through F.
Okay.
Or whatever it is, or one through nine.
We may have to read the additions, so.
Uh, that's, that is correct. Once there's an addition
That should be read.
We would have to read that to put it in the minutes.
And I think it's important, if we were to approve the consent agenda, we would have to make sure we're adding that item as
That is, yep, that is correct, that was a good point.
And it, maybe it'll be a little, a little more of an incentive for commissioners to look at them and, and know what they want pulled
Sure.
Prior to.
Yeah.
That, that is correct.
We, we have very few pulled right now, once in a while.
Sure. Okay. Well, one thing I, I, I try and discourage departments from doing, although we violated that today, is really, in my opinion, we probably should never amend the consent agenda. Because it's asking you to really, to, to sort of consider something without really having the opportunity to talk about it, to discuss it. So I try and steer departments away from amending the cons- amending consent items.
Okay.
We should, unless it's purely routine, we probably shouldn't do that very much.
The, the only way we should do it is if that contract, we have to, uh, do that on a contract basis that they forgot to bring to us in a timely manner. Other than that, it should not
Okay.
Anything to consent.
So then, public hearing procedures, any, any, let's see. Um, you know, um, we give you this script, and, uh, this script has changed a little bit over the years. We tried to, we str- we tried to streamline it a little recently, because it used to be us telling Commissioner Heinen this story. We used to, the board chair used to say, anyone in favor? Long pause, long pause. Anyone in favor? Pause, pause, pause.
Times.
And then we'd say, anyone opposed? Pause, pause, pause. Anyone opposed? Pause. We went away from that, and that kinda shortened things up a bit. Um, so I guess, you know, is there anything about the, the, that script or the way we do public hearings you all wanna see done differently?
What, what I need to know is, what legally do we have to do?
Sure.
What we have to say?
Yeah.
Other than?
Well, um, basically, again, it, when you're required by law to have a public hearing, you just simply need to give the public an opportunity to speak and be heard.
Right.
That's it. How you do the, the details of how you make that work is your decision.
The, the only part I see is that with some of the, the stuff that we do pre, you know, before the public hearing, we set the boundaries maybe a little bit. If we don't do some of that, we'll have total chaotic, you know, of, you know, you get two minutes to speak and all that other stuff.
Yeah.
Um, I, you need to have them ground rules set somehow.
Yeah. Well, to some extent, it's really how well the chair enforces it. So for example, if you say, if you say, okay, we're open for public comment, and someone comes up and they speak, and they're, they've said their part, but then the chair lets them get up a second time, a third time, a fourth time. You know, that's way for the chair to enforce, so.
Yeah, that's true.
You know?
So what we always, what we always did is that, uh, when someone got up and then another person got up and pretty soon everyone was repetitious, it's like, does anybody else have anything different to add to it, other than that? Leave it go.
I, I think one of the things we've done in the planning commission that's worked well is we make sure the audience understands that it's, this, this is their time for the public hearing.
Yeah.
So they're not wondering and trying to interrupt the commission in discussion. And so, you know, it's very clear that the public hearing's open, it's certainly not speaking in favor.
And that's what our script says, the public hearing is now open.
And then it's closed also.
And then it's closed, we say it's closed, yeah. Okay. So I'm not necessarily hearing if there's any perhaps structurally or whatnot we should change about pu- public hearings, it's more just how the chair enforces how it's run. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Open forum policy, uh, that's back there on the wall, and the chair has a copy right there. Um, that was adopted, oh, gosh, at least a dozen years ago. And I think, yeah, it was in response to maybe, um, maybe a little misbehavior happening at the podium where people are coming up here and maybe going really after, very personally after, uh, a department head or so on and so forth. That was kinda somewhat the motive behind it. Uh, but it basically says is, you know, you're allowing so much time, the chair could either make that longer or shorter. No personal attacks, no political, things of that nature. So again, it's, it's that right there by Commissioner Pop. I think in that, it's kinda like the public hearing thing, it's really, to the extent the chair enforces it, really hasn't been a problem. I don't know, we really haven't had much podium pounders in a while, so it really hasn't been an issue.
Except ditch authority.
Yeah. Yeah.
Which will happen again.
Right. So that, I, I don't know, there really hasn't been any issues from, 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 uh, open forum. And, and again, it really goes back to with the chair. If someone, I guess, were to launch into a very personal tirade against someone, I guess, you'd be up with the chair to kind of, you know, tone that down a little bit, so.
We'll back you up.
Okay. Well, I, I think, wasn't it when we were re, with the agricultural land in Wantabah Township, we had a few people on that one that was that we had to, you know, they, they took personal attacks on, on the board that, you know, well, I don't know why we're gonna approve this, we got three agricultural people up here or something, they met, made motion, you know, and I, I think that was a personal attack that we set that person down.
You know, one thing I've always heard about, you know, county board meetings is, it's your meeting. You decide how it runs. You don't even have to actually have an open forum section. You make that decision. The only time you have to allow public comment is again during a public hearing. But again, it's your meeting.
I think the open forum is good if somebody's got an issue they wanna bring up, and we give them, you know, we limit them to the time and.
Sure. Yeah. Uh, distribution, I thought this, well, all five of you, you're a good time to talk about number four. Uh, if your comfort, how, your comfort level of how you wanna receive packets. So, uh, right now, is, is it, everyone, who, who is paperless and who wants paper? Let's just, maybe we could make that, who's paperless?
We go right down the line? Beth, what would you like to do?
You can always, you can always change anytime.
I like paper.
Okay. I'd like to go paperless.
Yeah, with the, the new iPad, I'd like to go paperless, but I really, as chair, I wanna copy in front of me at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, and that's. Yeah. The hard copy of the agenda in front of you, okay.
Yeah.
Just the agenda, Mr. Chair?
Um.
Or the whole packet?
I guess I don't need the whole pack.
Just the agenda, yeah.
Yeah. I'll think about that one.
So, paper until you tell me.
Yeah, paper in front of me until I tell you.
Okay.
I would like to go paperless, but I'd like to have the agenda, hard copy in front of us.
So for anyone that's paperless, we'll have, we'll have a hard copy in front of you, you bet.
Okay.
You already know that. I started this process two years ago.
One thing, um, uh, uh, for everyone is up on the screen here, this is under our county website, so let me just kinda take a step back here. So county webpage, and you go government agendas and minutes. And this is where you can go and sign up to get those email notices. So whenever Vicky posts an agenda or minutes, the system will kick out an email to you with a link coming right back here, and then you can go in and open it up. So you just go into this, again, I just, I'm going here, government, agendas and minutes. And you start the process by clicking up here on the right-hand side, it says notify me. And this is where you start the process to, to, um, to, to sign up. You, you get your email address in there, and then you indicate, okay, here's the ones. And you, you, you'll, you'll be confronted with this long list of different, uh, boards, uh, and agendas and so on. And you just, you know, you click the ones you wanna get notices on, so you probably want to have, of course, county board, ditch authority, maybe all of these. So whenever Vicky or Roxanne's office posts an agenda, you're gonna get an email, and then a link back to this where you can go in and view it or print it out if you choose to. So I would encourage you all to, to get signed up for this system, ca- cause again, it's nice getting those e-mail notices.
So just on clear, Monty, are we, we're signing this up on our own here?
Yes, sir. We, we can help you, but it's, it's very easy if you wanna do it just on your own sometime.
We weren't doubling up.
It doesn't require intervention, you can easily do it on your own, just, oh, you know, you've got your county email address.
Yep.
And, um, I think what it does is you initially sign up, it's a double, what they call dou- dual, dual factor of, I'm not sure what it is, but it sends you an email with a link, and you've gotta click on that to confirm it. Um, so it's like a two-step process.
Sure.
But, uh, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward. But I definitely encourage you all to, to, to take advantage of that, to get those notices, so. Let's see, what else do you wanna talk about here? Um, live streaming, uh, we started live, uh, we started live streaming back in, I don't know, January, February?
Yeah.
Somewhere in there. Um, unfortunately, right now, we're experiencing some technical issues with live streaming. Uh, when we did the audio upgrade, somehow it's disrupted live streaming, so live streaming is not functioning. We're recording, and we'll put the recording out on YouTube as soon as it's available. Marco's gonna be out here in a week or so to hope we get this issue fixed. But somehow it's disrupting the livestream, but we'll get it, we'll get it back in, in or, working order and get it fixed. My purpose in putting this on here is just to say that, you know, we str- we livestreamed like county board meetings, but we weren't planning on doing like committees of the whole, that sort of thing. And just wanna make sure that was, you know, misunderstanding about that. that sort of thing. And just want to make sure that was, you know, misunderstanding about that. Our intention was to not live stream those informal board work sessions, just county board meetings. Okay, that seems fine with you all. Okay, good deal. Um, committees of a whole, another subject, um. Again, these are sort of informal work sessions. Up, up to this point, we've scheduled them kind of as needed. So, you know, if Chris has an issue he wants to talk about, we'll have those. There's been some discussion in the past about having like a standing committee of the whole once a month or so, and if you don't need it, you don't need it. So I just want to hear your thoughts about, you know, these, these work sessions. You, do you like the idea of having a sustaining one scheduled? Are you okay with just having them scheduled as needed? What's your, what's your feelings about that?
My personal opinion is scheduled as needed.
Correct. That's where I would, you know, after, after six years, you know, we can go sometimes couple, two, three weeks, even a month without having a committee of the whole sometimes.
Yeah, okay. It's, you know, I think when I first started here, they had like, they had like a highway and DOD committee of the whole, like every week. That was like a standing thing, but we, of course, long since moved away from that. So you just, you're comfortable with just as needed, we'll, we'll schedule those, okay? You know, we try and package things together, so we don't ask you to come out here and, and, and talk about one issue for thirty minutes and be gone. We want to make good use of your time. So sometimes we'll, maybe a smaller issue will come up and we'll say to a department, hey, can that wait? And we'll package it with some other issues, so, you know, it may be, we, we ask you to be here for an hour and ninety minutes and that's just a short meeting and then you have, then it's, then it's done. So. Hopefully we try and make some good choices about how much we ask you to drive out here and, um, so, okay.
Monte, could you know, I think we skipped commissioner concern.
Oh, commissioner concerns. Okay, thank you. Um, my reason for putting this in on here was, uh, more so, I guess, a request. Is we always have this on the agenda and it predates me, the, the commissioner concern item. Um, my, my request to you all, and that is, if you have an issue that you'd like on the county board agenda, if you could let me know beforehand and we could get it on the published agenda, um, that way it's nice than, for example, if it affects the department, they know it's gonna be on the agenda and they maybe know to be here to address the issue. Um, I know in the past it kind of moved away from that where the board chair will say, are there any commissioner concerns? And then sometimes issues are brought up, but we didn't know about it beforehand and there was really no one here to address it. So I, I guess my thoughts, if you can, it's great if you can let me or Vicki know, we'll put the agenda item on there in the packet and, uh, we can invite the affected department head to be here to address it for you. But you know, if something comes up short notice that day or that morning and you want to address it, of course, totally fine. But if you can give us a little advance notice, that's great too.
How much advance notice do you need to get it out there?
So, so for example, the, the, for today's agenda, the, the advance would have, notice would have been by last Wednesday. So the agenda packets go out typically that Thursday morning. Um, so last Thursday morning. So if you could let us know by maybe when, close the business Wednesday, uh, the, the Wednesday before, that's great. Um, and we're happy to do the agenda item for you, get it in the packet, let the department head know, hey, this issue's coming up. Uh, that's, that's, that's great. But again, please don't feel like you absolutely have to and you can't raise an issue that morning. Cause I know you get calls, something comes up, you want to talk about that day, that's of course, totally fine. Uh, employee forums, well, uh, last, Vicki, was it last year, two thousand nineteen? Or does it go back farther?
I thought it was nineteen.
It was nineteen.
Thousand nineteen. So, um, the board started having these, uh, it, I think this came out of some employee surveys where there was a desire for, for more employee county board interaction. And, um, so the board scheduled these four employee forums, so they were like at eight AM the morning before board meetings. And all employees are invited to come in and just sit down informally and just chat with the board about any issue that they, they did. You know, attendance is pretty light. Um, uh, various reasons, there weren't a lot of folks that did show up. But obviously the pandemic kind of threw a curve into having these employee forums, but that's how it was then. We would set up chairs here, like those half circle chairs. Board would sit there and some employees would come in and just, again, if it was more informal, just chat about issues that were going on. Um, no decisions made, things like that. So I just wanted to, I guess toss out, do you want to somehow resume having uh, some employee forums? Uh, what would be the, uh, before was, was it quarterly, Vicki?
It was quarterly.
And it, we had a limit on how many we'd allow too, right? We didn't know.
There was, we had, we had some rules about forums, that's right. There was a limit. We didn't want to board, we didn't want to board or impactful people.
We also wanted that if it become a personal, uh, personal complaint session, we didn't really want that to take place, you know. We wanted them to express their opinion, but if all you were gonna do is run, runs, you know, some department head or a county board member down, we didn't want that to happen.
Right. We, we had, we had some adopted, uh, employee forum guidelines. And whenever I would send out emails to employees about, hey, we're having the next one, I would include those guidelines just to remind people, this is kind of how this is gonna work. Right. You didn't, I think the board just didn't want to allow it to become a free for all. You know, and the ones we had, they didn't. It was a few people show up. It was a nice, pleasant conversation. It, it, it wasn't a problem, no, so. So you're thinking you might want to resume having those. One thing that we might want to do then is when you're setting your committees of whole, we might just want to go ahead and get those scheduled. I'm at, you know, pandemic, it, I guess we could, in this environment, we probably could still, you all could probably want to stay sitting there, but we can have employees sitting here, so. Were there any other issues? You know, again, this is kind of talking about how you run your meetings and procedural issues. Any other things you all want to talk about? We're okay for now? All right, sounds good. Appreciate it. I think that's all I had.
Commissioner, meeting updates?
I'll start.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I had none.
Okay. And I assume that. I did have one, uh, quite lengthy one, to tell you the truth. I'm on the, the, because we didn't have the annual fall conference, um, some of the things that, uh, they did was environment and natural resources did not meet with, um, uh, the ag BMP people, the department of, uh, our department of natural resources, Bowser and some of them. So, um, the guy that heads that for AMC set up a, a meeting between the heads of those people and a few other people and the chair and the vice chair of AMC's environment and natural resources. And so it was, I think we had from nine to, to ten thirty and ten thirty to noon came in and I was, uh, I'm the vice chair for, for the past year and so we had some things, uh, there was a lot of things that, the BMP deal, you know, there's, um, septic loans for failing septic systems. Lancher there, feedlot regulations, and they're gonna end up twenty-one million dollars short for them programs this year. That was what. Another one that's coming down that they're putting a lot of restrictions on is nitrogen and we're not so, um, we're not, we're in a restricted area here, but when you get to the southern part and that was, uh, what they had. The, the other part that we heard from Commissioner Tom Peterson was that the carcass management from the hogs got to be a really big deal. Um, actually, the day we had it, they were getting somebody to go out there that they were, the smell was really bad and they were really heating and they're trying to compost them. And I didn't realize, but they were taking in some days eight thousand hogs a day into this compost site. I mean, you, you can't imagine. Yeah, how many that was. So that was one of the things that, you know, and then naturally the, what's becoming of the ag plastics. Um, Otter Tail County, um, solid waste person was on there and they purchased a truck for this now through, through, uh, their score grants and some of that stuff. Uh, the county board picked up, they set a percentage of it so that, and, um, there are solid wastes, like, you know, you get somebody to run it and, and take it. And theirs is actually going to the same place ours goes to, Inns and Socks Center, to get bailed and shipped to, I think it's, uh, Alabama or Georgia, where they recycle it for a lot of your, um, your shopping, them light shopping bags, a lot of light shopping bags are. Another big concern that came out and, and we have to make sure that we address this in the county because that solar farm up in the, in the northwest part of the county is going forward. And solar on egg and then what's gonna happen to the end of life on these panels? You know, there's a lot of things in there that was, wasn't there. Um, and then from the, the, the Bowser people, it was, uh, budget of clean water fund is, there was twenty-eight million added from the sales tax for that. Um, uh, stormwater sui, or stormwater storage, or water storage in general is becoming a, a big thing like, um, they're paying people to go out and, and build a big storage facility before it goes into the ditch or something like that, so they, they want more money for that. Um, uh, one water, one plan, uh, needs to be in place by twenty twenty-five and I, I sit on the Rum River one and it, if, at the rate we're moving, it's gonna be all of twenty twenty-five if we don't get going. Um, and then one other thing that really struck a nerve with, uh, uh, I know Commissioner Johnson from Pikeston County said that is the DNR wants to add five hundred bodies of water to the public waters work department. And boy, there was pushback from every county that we don't need the DNR adding more public waters than what we already had. It, it's kind of like, you know, the DNR is big and they're powerful now and they just want to get more big and more powerful. And they said that it's not bad that you add these waters, but when every time they add waters comes more restrictions for our, our, uh, soil and water board and NCRS, which in turn costs more money in, in every individual county. So it was a long, uh, there was one in the afternoon that I couldn't meet, I had an appointment. But they, we did from, from nine to ten thirty, ten thirty to noon, and then we were doing from one to two thirty. All on Zoom. But it was, it was really interesting and, and they limited it, you know, they had requests from all, a lot of commissioners that are on, uh, uh, policy, environment, natural policy committee. But they, uh, they limited it to the chair and the vice chair and then we were supposed to take it to our, our counties and they were gonna send it out to every county's representative on that board, so. Um, that was all that I had. So then we have, uh, set committee of the whole.
Actually, Mr. Chair, if we could back up to commissioner concerns, and I was actually gonna bring this up to Monte, and this is somewhat on me. I made the assumption, I was under the understanding that we would have, I, I realized we're gonna have a cow for upcoming committees, but we have a planning commission meeting coming up the fourteenth with no member appointed from this board. So I was under the assumption that was gonna happen today as a separate line item. And I did not notice that at the beginning when we approved the agenda.
Right, I, 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 you, you, as you mentioned, I thought that was gonna be the case too.
And I don't know if it's appropriate at this time to, if we can act on that or not or what, but I, I, I guess it's me, we should have a common board member on that planning commission meeting.
Well, what we could do is we could appoint you temporarily until after our call meeting and into our next, uh, scheduled, uh, board meeting.
You know, I, I, um, gosh, I, I, I would caution against that uh, because, you know, those actions are taken as official actions of the planning commission, you know, with the force of law and it, it, I would be concerned about a member casting a vote when they were not officially a member. And, and with that cast into question the validity of that vote. So, uh, you know, I, I really apologize. I thought too, this is gonna be on our agenda. I, Roxanne, I, I thought we were going to.
I, because obviously I noticed the ones that we appointed for planning commission and, uh, board of adjustment and wa- waste advisory committee. But that, that to my knowledge is the only commission that's gonna be having a, a, a meeting before our next scheduled county board meeting.
Oh, I see, I, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, so, uh.
But we are missing.
We did, we did appoint, uh, former Commissioner Peschel, uh, to that and Mary Jo.
Right, but he's a, he's a, he's a community member now in the planning commission.
And now the fog is clearing. You were talking about this board's appointment to planning commission, okay. And that, that action was deliberate to wait until the first, I'm sorry, the second meeting in January. That was deliberate.
But it was my understanding that we were going to, again, understanding we were gonna have a separate cow for all the appointments. The planning commission was the only board that was going to have a meeting before our appointments were finished.
Oh, okay.
And that that would be a separate agenda item today to appoint a county board member to the planning commission. Because as of right now, the January fourteenth planning commission will not have a county board member on it.
I, I wonder if it would be able to achieve a quorum, to still have a meeting.
That's the other possibility, depending on the commission members attendance. Typically, that's a not issue, but.
So can we do it now?
You know, I, I, again, I would caution against doing that. It wasn't on the published agenda and it wasn't amended at the beginning of the meeting. So, uh, I would caution against adding, adding something here at the end now, which wasn't on either amended at the beginning or on the published agenda. You know, again, I, I, I think it would create a problem if planning commission couldn't achieve a quorum. And they, there's, what, there's eight, eight members?
I, I would say that this is the first time in, in my knowledge that we've not had a county board member on a planning commission.
Well, again, it definitely, it, at, at the latest, that appointment will occur the second meeting in January, absolutely the latest. It'll, it'll, the, the intention was to have all, all of your appointments then formalized then at the second meeting in January. So then you would have discussed it at this committee of the whole, all your appointments done, uh, second meeting in January, which is the nineteenth. So that is the absolute latest that appointment would occur.
Move the meeting?
Uh, it's publicized, it's all public here, public portion's been advertised and.
Yeah, I, typically if there's, if there's a, if there would be a public hearing on that, it would have been probably published by now, right, yeah.
Right, I mean, that meeting is gonna go forward.
Do you know, is the agenda pretty big for that meeting?
Um, I don't recall, I haven't, I don't think I've seen the full. It won't be sent to me at this point, I would not be getting it.
And the other part is they're probably gonna elect chairs.
They're gonna, they're gonna set their, that's correct. And that's why I was under the understanding that that was gonna happen today because that person needs to be appointed. Because then that person is there involved in the beginning of the organization.
Is it seven days for a special meeting?
Three, three, three days, three days for a special meeting, that's right. When it, when is the planning commission meeting?
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth, okay.
So we could have a meeting Friday?
You could, you could have a short special meeting to make your appointment to planning commission, you could, yeah.
Could we do it through the email? Could we do it online?
You could do it. Yes, I mean, you could, you could do this remotely. You couldn't do it by email, but you could do it like, for example, via go-to meeting. You could use our virtual meeting method if you wanted to, but you couldn't do it by, you couldn't do it by email though.
I see Roxanne's on line with us. I don't know if she has any input on that or.
She's listening?
I'm listening. It, it would be preferable to have a county commissioner on the planning commission.
I, I, I see it, Roxanne, is pretty important as far as the reorganization and stuff like that goes. And some of the agenda and, you know, the report back, well, you know, kind of being if there's anything really important or a lot of things come back, we won't hear about it at the county board meeting, then that, in second one in January.
Could, would we be able to talk about more of on the board placements at that meeting too? Can we make it more than just that? See if we can get a start on it?
Uh, question again, so Roxanne, uh, do you have any published public hearings for your, your next planning commission meeting?
Yes. Well, all, everything on our agenda is a public.
Typically a public hearing, right, yeah, okay. So that, that date's fixed, that's pretty well fixed in stone then, okay. So I think this, you know, in order, in order for you to make your formal appointment, you really should have a special meeting where you can actually vote on something formally. So if you want to have, uh, your board member uh, appointed to planning commission, we should schedule a special meeting today then.
Okay. I, I would, I would probably agree that that should be done after hearing from Roxanne and hearing from Scott, who's got, you know, an abundance of experience on that board.
So, uh, what would be the best, what would be the best day to have a special meeting then for you all? Sometime, uh, let's see.
Would have to be by Friday, I would assume.
Well, again, you need a three-day posting requirement, so, um,
So it's three days from today, right?
So, it'd be from, I, you could definitely go Friday, Friday, Friday after this point, from this point after or, or into next week. What's, what's your schedules look like?
Members interested in doing this in Zoom or you want to get, come in here?
So, this is what we really could do. Is if we're gonna have a committee of a whole next week, we could have a special meeting before that.
Y- y- or right after, right?
And or right after.
That makes, that makes a lot of sense, yeah.
Okay, so if we schedule a committee of a whole meeting, in example, uh, at, uh, on the twelfth, then we could have that special board meeting after that.
Absolutely, right, yeah.
And you would still be able to, uh, do the planning commission the fourteenth.
That's enough notice?
Absolutely, right, yeah. Again, just three-day posted notice, yeah. So you're seeing Cal on the twelfth, same day, right afterwards, short special meeting. Make that appointment and then you're good to go.
That, correct, because I will have to be reappointed to two of my committees too, that I'm gonna be chair on for next week too. And that was a good point, I'm glad you brought that up.
I, I think that special meeting should include the ones that are needed. Unless we get through everything in the cow.
It can include everything in the cow.
Do the cow first and then we can just.
That's true, you're right. I mean, if there's a consensus on what those appointments are uh, from the cow, I think we could just move it right forward into the special meeting and say, hey, we're adopting what we just talked about. And then you wouldn't have to then deal with it again on the nineteenth, you're done. What time on the twelfth then? Nine?
Nine AM works good.
Nine o'clock on the twelfth.
You know, and I guess I'll just, I see Roxanne, so listening, Roxanne did exactly what Roxanne and I discussed of having uh, the public members of the planning commission appointed. I'll take, uh, responsibility for misunderstanding what our plan. I'll take, uh, responsibility for misunderstanding what our plan was for the county board member appointee. Again, I was just assuming it would be discussed in the committee of the whole first, so that's, that's my fault.
Okay.
So the twelfth on, on, okay. So the, the committee of the whole will be first and then the special meeting would start, you know, roughly ten o'clock, something like that.
Sure.
Okay. Okay.
Well, Chris had said something that he wanted to be.
Is Chris, you can't find Chris. Well, I guess, uh, Chris wanted to talk about, uh, two row projects. I guess let's do this. I would say let's add that to that, that agenda for the twelfth and we'll just cross our fingers that it, it's going to, I thought he was going to stick around, that it works for him too. So we need a committee of the whole on the twelfth to talk about board commission appointments and highway issues.
Okay, and then have a special meeting afterwards.
Special meeting to follow, right.
So we have to have a set time for that special meeting?
Meeting, okay.
To approve the appointments.
Do we have to have a set time for that special meeting?
You should, because the published notice says you have to publish the date, the time and the place and the, and the, and the subject.
So I would think, the earliest I would want to do it would be ten thirty.
Ten thirty?
Well.
You need ninety minutes?
I know, I, I got some, some questions with that highway.
Okay.
Cause I know we want to discuss fifty-five and I've had, had a call from the city.
You know, and it'll take easily an hour to work our way through that committee and board listing.
I would say ten thirty.
So nine o'clock, cow, ten thirty special meeting.
Yep.
You know, on, on the thought of the board commission appointments, do you see, would you, would you want me to invite any department heads to be here to help you with that discussion? If you have questions about this board or that board, would you, would you need their assistance at all in that discussion?
That would be good.
Okay. You know, there might be a few that, that I, I don't have the depth to answer all your questions you may have about what this board does or when they meet and that sort of thing, so. We wouldn't necessarily need to invite all of our department heads, but maybe just a few who have most of these.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or if they had somebody that they could substitute for them.
I will, I will invite them, okay. So let's see, Vicki's given me, so we're, I guess what we're doing is we're setting the committees of the whole. She also gives me this listing of, uh, Vicki, what's this note here for?
Um, we're going to delay that one, so it's just.
The AMC County Government one oh one virtual meetings, uh, so January twentieth, twenty-first, February seventeenth and March seventeenth, all from nine to noon. If we, we'll add those, if we could add those to the committee of the whole listing. The AMC County Government one oh one virtual meetings.
That's for new commissioners, right?
Yes, sir.
And all three are registered.
All three are registered, yeah.
Good.
So, uh, that's what we have for, for committee of the whole. If you all want to make a motion, we'll get that approved.
Motion to approve committee of the whole.
Second.
Motion to amend second if to approve the committee of the whole, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Any other business that needs to come before the board at this time?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to his turn.
Second.
Second.
We're adjourned.